Welcome to the September 19, 2023 Work Session, a special session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, I have a proclamation for International Gang Awareness Week. And we have Danielle Staley, who is the MCIN Coordinator, to receive it. You ready? Y'all ready?
Right. Whereas.
Whereas. Proclamation, International Gang Awareness Week, September 17 through 23, 2023. Whereas, our country needs to recognize that gang violence is a growing concern and affects persons of every age, race, culture, gender, and financial background. And whereas, International Gang Awareness Week promotes the benefits of prevention, intervention, and enforcement, as well as the effectiveness of collaborations within and amongst our communities, schools, jails, and prisons. This observance will serve to educate the community on gang violence and how it can be eradicated through a joint effort of committed community. And whereas, the city of Hagerstown calls upon all people to oppose the proliferation of gangs and gang violence in our communities. And whereas, all citizens, businesses, and organizations are urged to support law enforcement officials, volunteers, teachers, healthcare professionals, and all those who work to help our children avoid gangs and gang violence. Now therefore, I to Keisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23, 2023, as International Gang Awareness Week and do commend this observation to all our citizens. Thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for your leadership and your service.
I don't actually. I wasn't prepared to actually say anything. But one thing that we are really trying to do this week is get out into the community, work with kids, and try and enforce to them the negativity that gangs bring to a community. So if you run into youth, have that positive conversation with them because they certainly need it.
All right. Next, we have Ethics Commission mandatory and proposed amendments to Ethics Code. And with us, we have Joseph Jefferson, Chairman, and then Jason Morton, our City Attorney. And Stacy Michael also here. You want to come up too, Stacy? You can pull this chair around.
Jason has his own seat.
There you go. Jason can get in his seat and maybe he does. He does with a nameplate. You're never here. You're right.
Very good.
You're right.
Hello.
Good evening. How are you doing? Good. I'm going to make just brief statements because Jason, as the person who has helped us construct this, will probably answer most of the more detailed information. The changes that were made to the existing code were done so in an effort to encourage our citizens to come forth with ethical concerns that they might have, also being able to protect their identity. You will also notice in these amendments to the code, we inserted some other elements in an effort to protect our respondents from any frivolous complaints that might arise. Finally, these changes were implemented in an effort to be consistent with the state of Maryland, as well as there are some additional verbiage in the document that were mandated by the state. That sums up all I have to say.
You guys have any questions?
There's got to be more to it.
I was about to say.
Well, the state passed mandatory revisions in 2021 and told us, here's what you need to do. And they have been decent with us about giving us an extension of time. We're supposed to have it done by this year, and we don't. But I've been in touch with the Chair of the State Ethics Commission, and he said, as long as you're making progress towards that, then that's fine. The last time that we had mandatory revisions, it was so burdensome to take our code and try to insert into it the new provisions that they wanted, that I thought it would be easier just to take. There are model codes out there. They're sanctioned by the state. So we took the simpler of the two model codes and used that substantively. It's very, very similar to what we have in our code already. But it does have what is nice, is it has the mandatory revisions in it. So we don't have to think too much about that. The mandatory revisions are highlighted in the code that we put together and is in your packet. With respect to what Joe's talking about, as to what we don't have in our code and have never had, are rules of procedure, if there's a complaint, or if there's a request for a advisory opinion. And so what that meant was when we had a complaint, most recently last year, we fortunately did have a provision that allows outside council to come in and assist because I'm probably going to be conflicted out of anything that involves a city staff or city council member. And we did have outside council who came in and did a really good job, from what I could tell. I kept my distance from it. But she had to scramble to create her own rules, or the commission's own rules. So we also want to put together rules of procedure, which will, as Joe was saying, state. And this tracks what the state law says, is that when you file a complaint, everything is confidential unless there's found to be a violation or a referral to criminal authority. And the same is true with advisory opinions. And we don't have that anywhere in our code at the moment. So the hope is that we would present this to the state because once you all say, this is fine with us, we present to the state. They have to review and determine if this is consistent with the state standard. I'm assuming they're going to say yes because I used their model and we tweaked it some. And once they approve, then it goes through, comes back to you all and goes through our normal ordinance process. The second part, to have the confidentiality provisions that we want that track the state language, would be to adopt rules of procedure, and that's where the confidentiality provisions would be built in. So that's a lengthy process, and it starts, it's actually started some time ago with the commission getting together and working on drafts and presenting their opinions as to these matters, and then coming to you all with the product that we hope is acceptable. And once you say yay, then I'll get it to the State Ethics Commission. And once they approve, then it'll come back to you in the way of an ordinance. So that's probably more than you bargained for in an exclamation. That's why I don't get invited all the time.
Yeah, that's why they don't have you up here.
Yes. But if there are any questions.
I don't have any questions about the highlighted. No, it needs to go to the State Ethics Commission first.
No, I'm good. You guys good?
Yeah.
All right.
I do have one question, Jason. Does the rules of procedure document or process, is that voted on by just the Ethics Commission or is that a mayor and council?
No, that would be, it's just as the mayor and council has their own rules of procedure that they adopt as each new body comes in. So the Ethics Commission would have to adopt their own rules of procedure. And as you know better than anybody, Donna, we're one short right now on the commission. So we're close to full strength, that we at least can get a quorum together when we need to. But once we have five, we'll be in good shape.
That's my, I think.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. What's my favorite? It's the agenda, preliminary agenda reveal. Shall I read it like a poem? So our regular session, September 26, 7 o'clock, call to order by me. We'll have invocation by Councilwoman Burnett, pledge to the flag, announcements, rules of procedure effective December 15, 2020, use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for October is October 3. We have a work session at 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 10, we have a work session at 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 17, work session at 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 24 is our regular session of 7:00 p.m., where Councilwoman Burnett will give the invocation. Thought I'd say that twice. Tuesday, October 23, no meeting scheduled. And then we have our appointments for the Hagerstown Youth Council members, Board of Traffic and Parking. And then we have public hearings, 2023 Land Management Code Amendments, UCLM, Local Conversion, District Resoning. And then 13 through 17 Western Maryland Parkway Annexation. And we'll have citizen comments. And then we'll go the minutes, August 1, August 8, August 15, August 22 of 2023. Consent Agenda, Community Engagement, Open Container Exemption, and Street Closers for Downtown Fall Folk Festival, October 14, 2023. Then Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, Bispa Lamp Post Sponsorship Program. For the Police Department, we have a 2023 Ford Explorer Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, $43,200. And we have a 2022 Ford F-150 Police Responder, Hagerstown Ford, Hagerstown, Maryland, $45,319. Various Uniform Shirts, Howard Uniform Company, Baltimore, Maryland, $16,554.86.
Madam Mayor. Just to go back to the 22 Ford F-150 Police Responder from Hagerstown Ford. When I vote next week, I'll mention this again, but I'll be abstaining my vote on that part, but I will vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
Thank you. So I'm at Public Works, sorry. Public Works, thank you. HVAC Replacement for Police Athletically, Tenant Space, MS Johnson, Hagerstown, Maryland, $11,350. 2024 Ford F-550 Dump Truck with Salt Spreader and Plow for Parks, Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, that's $123,529. Hagerstown ICE Amateur Athletic Association, HIAA, ice making equipment repair reimbursement for HIAA, Hagerstown, Maryland, $11,925. 2024 Ford F-550 Dump Truck with Salt Spreader and Plow for Public Works, Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, $123,529. 2024 Ford F-750 Dump Truck with Salt Spreader and Plow for Public Works, Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, $191,756. For utilities, we have light, physical year, consulting services, blanket contract, GDS Associates, Inc., Marietta, Georgia, $10,253.75. For unfinished business, approval of an ordinance amending the city code by increasing the number of members of the Hagerstown Youth Council and establishing a partner group. Approval of an ordinance, conveyance of city property, and granting temporary construction easement to the Board of County Commissioners, Crystal Falls Drive. New business, introduction of an ordinance, Quick Claim Alley, Number 2-82A. Approval of a resolution, outgoing loan agreement with Washington County Historical Society. Approval of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, First Amendment to the Agreement with Board of Education of Washington County for School Resource Officers. Approval of a memorandum of understanding for access to regional automated property identification database, Rapids. Approval of extension of the Invest Hagerstown City Center Redevelopment Grant for 49 and 37 Jonathan Street, City Sprouts LLC. City Administrator Comments, Mayor and Council Comments, and then a juror. Next up, we have Brighton Manor Stormwater Management Pond, Mr. Jim Bender, our City Engineer.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
Good afternoon. So the Brighton Manor Development is a residential subdivision sort of in the northwest side of town. It abuts the Central Chemical Property. It was developed in the late 1980s, early 1990s. And like most of the residential developments that go in, it has a stormwater management pond. But what's different about Brighton Manor is normally the stormwater management ponds in the development are on their own parcels, and they are maintained by the Homeowners Association. But there is no Homeowners Association at Brighton Manor. So what the developers did is instead of putting the stormwater pond on a separate lot, they made it part of one of those residential lots. So you can see in the attached exhibit, you've got all these regular-sized building lots, and then you have this one big arrowhead-shaped lot that includes a stormwater pond. The problem with that is that single property owner is responsible for doing the mowing and doing maintenance on that whole big expanse of land there. That pond, since the very beginning, has had trouble with sinkholes. There've been a whole series of sinkholes that have developed at different places in the pond over the years, and the property has changed hand a couple of times. And the previous property owners had tried to fill in the sinkholes or do something with them, but they just keep coming back. And now there's a new owner there that is trying to deal with this problem, and he has reached out to the city to see if the city would be willing to assist in dealing with this problem. And when the development was recorded, when the plat was recorded, there actually are notes on the plat that say that the property owner is responsible for normal maintenance, mowing, weed control, that sort of thing. But for major, major things that need to be done in the pond, the city would actually be responsible for providing those maintenance, that work. And I think in my opinion, and even in Rodney's opinion when he was still here, trying to deal with these sinkholes is really beyond the ability of a single property owner to deal with. Really need to get a contractor in there, probably get a geotechnical engineer to come in and review the situation. And so what I would like to do is, with the council's approval, go ahead and get a consultant involved here, draw up some plans for trying to remediate this problem. We may even try to incorporate some sort of retrofit things that would get us credit for our stormwater permit, and then actually put a contract out next year using money from the stormwater fund to go in and try to fix this problem once and for all. But it is a little bit unusual because this is, in some ways, it's spending city money on private property. But I think that this is an unusual situation, and I think.
I mean, imagine being a homeowner and saddled with that responsibility.
Yeah, he's concerned because he's already gotten his lawnmower stuck in one of those sinkholes. You know? It is.
Well, I'm good.
Okay.
You want to introduce Bill?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Is this Bill Killinger? He's on our staff. He's been the.
Hi, Bill.
He's been here for many years. He served as our, basically, our engineering design supervisor. So he was supervising our design crew and doing a bunch of other stuff. He does a lot of our traffic-related stuff. We are reorganizing our department a bit, just because we are having trouble, you know, finding people that want to come work for municipalities as engineers, at least. So Bill is actually, his title is actually going to change. I'm not even sure what the title is, but it's basically not Assistant City Engineer, but it's Assistant to the City Engineer or something like that. So basically, what it means is Bill is going to be the number two person in the department. Bill's going to be Jim. And moving up. So I asked.
Bill's going to be you, and you're going to be you. The new you.
Then he got a sound effect on it.
So I just, I asked Bill to stop down. He doesn't come to too many council meetings, but there are probably going to be times when I'm not available and Bill's going to be, you know, presenting, just like I did when Rodney wasn't available, and I sometimes would fill in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Got a new Jim.
The new old Jim. Project update and deadlines for 49 and 37 Jonathan Street, City Sprouts LLC, and we have Chris Simmerling, our Economic Development Specialist.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris.
Here to provide a project update regarding 49 to 37 Jonathan Street by City Sprouts LLC. They were a city center, sorry, Invest Harris Sound City Center grant recipient for a grant up to $230,000 for the renovation of the property, for the creation of eight residential apartments, and one to two first-floor commercial spaces. The original application was approved by Mayor and Council on September 30, 2021, with the original project deadline of July 1, 2022. There was a extension request that bumped that to January 1, 2023, and then a second extension to May 1, 2023, due to contractor and supply chain issues at that time. The developer had requested an additional third project extension. They are asking for November 30, 2023, in order to fully complete the project by that At this time, the Review Committee is seeking Mayor and Council decision on the approval of the third and final extension request of November 30, 2023, after which the Review Committee would recommend forfeiture. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
You guys good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Borough Box, 60 West Washington Street, and we have Ms. Jill Thompson, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Hi, Jill.
Hi, thank you.
Thanks, please.
So back in April, you passed a motion to end the operation of the Borough Box effective at the end of June. And so we just wanted to come back and do some quick clarifications of the use of the space. And our recommendation is to use this space only for city use going forward. And that would mean that we would no longer rent the conference room, which was primarily associated with the Borough Box. And we also had an open RFP to solicit a private operation of the Borough Box space as an entrepreneurship center. And we have not seen a proposal come in that we would recommend to you since we posted that RFP quite some time ago. So we're recommending pulling that RFP off our website and proceeding with the space being utilized solely for city use. The way we use it is primarily to support the Youth Advisory Council. They enjoy the space for their meetings. It also supports the Main Street program and the Arts and Entertainment District. So it is an active space, and we think it's best used internally. And we would also continue to explore any USMH interest if they, at some point in the future, would be interested in expanding classroom space in that building. And that has been a conversation we've been nurturing with USMH. So that's my recommendation for how we move forward.
Would fresh academics be able to still, like, use it for their hip-hop class and the days that they have?
They lease the front portion, and so I think they're satisfied with the lease arrangement for the front portion. Yes.
You don't think that, because the times that you've said that the city would use it is pretty rare, like, once a month, right? Twice a month for different things. And one of the things that people struggle with, business owners struggle with, is finding space to hold meetings. So is there, would it be too complicated to rent it? Like, is that?
In the last year, we've had maybe two renters of the space. So we're not seeing a lot of activity. In the last six or seven months, we've had zero renters of the conference room. And we only previously rented the small conference room. We have never rented the full space. I think as busy as our department is, it's a recommendation to spend staff time and resources in other capacity of higher and better use.
Yeah, that I understand. I just know that it is a challenge for business owners to find space. And I would say that most don't know that the Borough, they probably thought it was associated with the membership and may not have asked. But I understand the capacity for staff, and I'm just curious.
And what we're seeing is the private sector enter into the market of cowork space. So there's two cowork spaces downtown, and that has filled that need. And also, I think the meeting room space at the library is at times underutilized. And when we receive phone calls, we often do referrals to the space in the library, both the large conference room that they have there, a multipurpose room, as well as smaller meeting rooms, that the library has beautiful meeting space for even four people.
Right, right. I mean, I'm fine. I'm fine with it. You guys good? Yep.
Mayor, if I could, would it be okay, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, to talk a little bit about the Investor Roundtable and how that went last week?
Sure. So on Thursday, it was a partnership between Greater Hagerstown Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, City Art Department, as well as Community Engagement Department, and the CBB Downtown Baseball, Inc., to present information about what is happening in downtown investment. And Downtown Baseball and the Flying Box Cars came in and did a presentation, which I thought was terrific. We had also a presentation about the investment activity that we're seeing. Doug and I co-presented, talking about upper-floor residential development that is happening, and also citywide housing development, our programs and services. And then there also was a presentation by John Whack to give a really great update on the Field House project. And the Convention and Visitors Bureau in the county also spoke. So the number of attendees was approximately 55 to 60 investors. The investors were both, some that are new to our community, that are starting projects, but I believe there were people in the room that were looking at Hagerstown for the first time for investment opportunities. The mayor joined for a welcome, and I thought it was a great morning. This was the second time that we've done this Investor Roundtable, and it's a great collaborative partnership to showcase what is happening. Because I truly believe investment breeds more investment, and the confidence that our investors have and the peer-to-peer stories that are being told, I think, is very valuable beyond even what staff can convey. We did a video presentation on the Uptograph Building, and I can circulate a link to that if it's not yet up on our website, so everyone can see that.
Thank you.
The flythrough of what the stadium is going to look like was really, really good. And I think that they said that they're going to have that be public without the person commentating. And I think that they said that they're going to have that be public without the, the person commentating behind it. But I think that'd get the, the city excited, to be able to see what that's going to look like from the moment you walk in. I mean, to all the different parts. I think that people will be excited when they get to see what it looks like.
And appreciated the question about the Cultural Trail, to ensure that the, the stadium was going to incorporate the Cultural Trail as they should. And, and it was a very strong commitment that that was going to happen. So that was good to hear also.
The stadium presentation and the Fieldhouse both had the fly-through presentations, and that, that's just a great way to envision and take a pre-construction tour of both facilities. Very exciting.
All right. Next up, we have our Legislative Priorities Discussion for Maryland General Assembly twenty twenty-four. And we have Scott Niceworm coming from all the way right here, our city administrator.
We're way ahead of schedule, so I've got a good hour and a half I can do this.
Oh, good God.
You don't, you don't though.
So it's that time again where we need to start coming up with some legislative priorities. You all need to come up with some legislative priorities as elected body for the twenty twenty-four General Assembly session beginning in January. You've already heard from Rob Gradula on his thoughts concerning the session. You're going to hear on the third from Paul Frye and Jim Kirchvoll about the Community Coalition, looking for the city's participation in that group again. Those meetings have already started to talk about priorities that the Coalition is going to move forward with, with John Favazza and, I can't remember the name of his lobbying group, but same one we've had for a long time. So you'll hear about that next week. And then also, the delegation, Washington County delegation, has moved up their meetings, the collective meetings that, that start in the morning with Chamber and then go all through the day. And into late October, I think that is, if anybody out there can, can nod their head. I, I think they moved it up into late October. It's usually in November. So those will start. The initial word from pretty much anyone you talk to that knows anything about Annapolis is this is going to be a very lean year for capital projects. Even though the Comptroller stated there's a five-hundred-plus-million-dollar surplus this year, there is still expected to be a, a very lean year for capital projects. However, that does not mean that capital projects should not be submitted. And the recommendation we will provide to you next month will be that we go forward again with, with another shot at Fieldhouse money, between three and four million dollars. That seems to be a, a nice little, a nice little range that we've been recommended to look for. And again, we would advocate for that in Annapolis. We will also be going back on the tax sale bill that did not get out of committee last year, which related to being able to send a tax sale parcels that have taxes paid, but have outstanding abatements and are vacant. That was where it got hung up last year, is that there wasn't, there wasn't a, a good feeling from, from some legislators that we were only concerned with vacant properties. They did not want us, just because a rental would have abatements that were left unpaid, that we would be evicting anybody out of a home. And that was never the case. We just need to make sure that it's a little more clear in the legislation to do that. So we'll be submitting those. And I would also plan to submit those as blue sheets for the Community Coalition, if you all decide that we're going to participate in that again. Other potential initiatives that you could think about doing, in addition to the ones that, that you all come up with, would be other capital projects. The four forty-one South Potomac Street would be one, I think, would be a viable capital project to ask for some state money for. It, it appeared to me in some of the municipalities that I've spoken to that they are still going pretty hard after capital projects in multitudes of tens and twenties, which kind of surprised me, because we've really never done that here in Hagerstown. We've always picked that one or two major project to go after. So that could be something for you to consider with four forty-one South Potomac, with Wakefield Road Station, with Community Garden relocation as a result of HFD. Those are other capital projects that we could, that you all could consider going after some state bond money for. On the purely legislative side, there have been some discussions and some interest in several other, several other pieces of legislation that really could either be done by ordinance or could go to the state level. One of those has to do with certification and registration of sober houses. Sober houses are residential facilities that have a structured living situation of people in recovery from a substance abuse disorder. There's usually not any treatment provided by the center. It's just a place for them to, to be in an environment of support from others that are going through the same thing. There is a state certification process, but there is no requirement to be certified. The, the concern is, is that there may be houses that could open up that might, that might not take the concerns of the, of the residents in, in, in the best of minds and just look for the, the reimbursements that may come. Not saying that happens here. This is more, this is also a state concern. But will also be something that I think you'll find some legislation on, and something also this body could think about in the future, either advocating for, looking at local ordinance to do. Secondly, would be certification and registration of property management companies. There are many laws on the books throughout the country that require all property management companies have a staff person that has a real estate license. That is not the case here. There have been some discussions statewide, but also within the county here, that that would be something that would be a recommendation provided, that property management companies would have to have at least one certified real estate broker on staff. Also, looking at other things such as application fees, the monitoring of application fees, rent stabilization. That has become a buzzword since the money has run out of COVID money, ERAP money. That has created a very significant concern within, especially this community, but also throughout the state, that could cause a rash of evictions. And when you have housing stock that is just not to the point where you can find alternative housing for folks, that becomes a problem because they end up on the street. And that is also going to be a, a big discussion point, not only, I think it will be one locally, and I think that those discussions have already started with some of the agencies, but also statewide, as far as some sort of a legislative approach. Gaithersburg, Tacoma Park, Howard County are looking at rent stabilization, capping rent increases either to the Consumer Price Index or some other percentage, three percent, five percent, somewhere in that range. If that is something that this body would ever want to consider, we could always bring that back. Do that through ordinance, or if, if it gets some traction at a state level, then that will, they'll mandate it for us. Another one that is also being talked about would be the Public Identification of Principals and LLC filings for business licenses. Right now, if you have somebody that buys one-two-three Main Street, and they're part of an LLC and they call that LLC one-two-three Main Street, and they usually have a resident agent. That resident agent can be a resident agent for a ton of LLCs, and that's the only person you really know is involved. When we actually go back and try to find the owners of particular properties, you do not have a way to find the principals of the LLCs. This would be a, a way to do that, where it would publicly disclose who is involved in that LLC. That, that was brought up several times during legislative committee meetings with MML, and I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing. I know we've struggled with that several times when it's come to blighted properties, trying to find who these people are. And the resident agent, if the resident agent bails, then you're pretty much out of luck in trying to find. So that, again, that could be, that, that would be more on the state level. That would have to be addressed. And I think there's some motivation to see how that goes through the legislature. Just some other things, and this is really kind of getting into MML, but I think it's important that you all know about it, would be, we submitted a Legislative Action Request, MML, on annexations and removal of a need for express approvals by the county when it comes to annexation, when the zoning, proposed zoning for an annexation is different than what the county does, and then what the county has that area zoned for. And Kathy, if I butcher this, let me know. Right now, we have to go to the county for express approval to annex using the new zoning, because their zoning is different. That could be residential going to an agricultural-type zoning. If we can't do that, then you got to wait five years. And then that, then that's when the, the annexation could take, could take place. This was the number one voted, good, correct.
Yeah, we weren't suggesting completely doing away with the express approval, but not having the test be zoning to zoning, because municipal county zoning rarely matches up well. But be the comprehensive plan recommendation to comprehensive plan recommendation.
Right. Thank you. That was the number one voted recommendation by the Legislative Committee for MML. But it is not one that made it into a priority, and I'll tell you why here in a second. The other, the other two pretty major recommendations that you think you're the only ones that have this issue, but you find out the entire state, to an extent, has it, had to do with tax differential. There is a, there was a push within our committee to create legislation that makes all counties shall counties, which means that the county shall come and sit before the municipal, municipal bodies and explain how they got the tax differential they got, as it applied to that municipality. Right now, there's only eight, I believe, eight or nine counties that are shall counties. Everybody else is not, except for Frederick, that does it another way. I think that relates to ninety-three municipalities that really don't have a say in what their tax differential is. That, as well as looking at alternative revenue sources, whether it be through increased cannabis revenue, institution of a sales tax that would come to the municipalities instead of going to the counties, the gasoline tax, cigarette tax, some way that some of that money gets funneled back to us so that we don't have to completely rely primarily on fees and most primarily on property tax. It was decided through some discussions with the committee that we were going to, at least as far as tax differential and revenue sources, we're going to work with MAKO and try to come up and, and, and have a legislative task force created with MAKO, MML, legislators, and other stakeholders to try to come up with some, I don't want to say compromise, but maybe some strategy as to how we attack this, because we all felt it was something that was needed. It was just too much for one, for one session, and it needed to be spread out. So that's going to be a strategic initiative, especially as it relates to tax differential and trying to find a better way, at least to get all counties to shall counties. So those, those were the big ones that are, are pretty, I mean, we know, are pretty contentious, that we think we can, we can find a path forward on, especially when it comes to the, the, the need for municipalities to annex, the need to have a fair tax differential, and the need to create alternative revenue sources. So hopefully, we can get some progress on that this session. MML did present three priorities to the Board of Directors on Friday. Those are, the first, establishment of tourism zones within municipalities. It'll authorize counties and municipalities to establish these zones through local ordinance that allow local government to provide various incentives to businesses that attract and expand tourism in local commercial districts beyond current authority. Like an enterprise zone, now you can add a tourism zone on top of it as another way of recruitment. That was the second-largest vote getter. So that, that, that was a good one, we all thought, to move forward. Secondly, civilianizing the review and citing of speed camera violations. Right now, only sworn officers or sworn personnel can review and actually write the violations for people that are certified as violating the speed limit with a speed camera. This would allow a civilian to be able to do that and pull those officers out of a room, looking at a computer screen all day, and get them out in the field. That also received a significant number of positive feedback from the committee. There is a concern within, that within the legislature, there will be those that will fight back on that a little bit. So we're going to work on a strategy on how to deal with, with that situation. But again, that was, that was another good one. The task force that I, I talked about with revenue enhancements, that was the third one, the third priority. These were, these were all approved by the Board of Directors on Friday. At Fall Conference, they'll go to the general membership. They should pass, and then we'll start getting to work with, working with legislators on that. Other ones, just as you're thinking through what you might think is, would be good priorities to have, either through the legislature or local ordinance. And I'll come back in, in November and try to get that list pinned, or in October, try to pin that list down from you all. Legislation to provide discretionary authority to local government that would allow, right now, the state mandates that when you make announcements, you have to put them in a newspaper. Well, many of us don't have really newspapers anymore. So we would like the ability to have that legal communication go on, if you have a website, it can go on a website and count. That is something else to think about. And these are also ones that we could go in with other counties, other delegations, and try to get sponsorships for. This one before has had issues because there's a pretty big newspaper lobby, and newspapers make a lot of money on these advertisements, so they don't want to lose that. So that's going to be a, that'll be somewhat of a fight. Legislation to allow local municipality to create their own police accountability board. We were basically told, we've been told several times by legislators downstate, don't bring anything about cannabis and don't bring anything about police reform, because they just don't want to hear it. They want to take a session off on those topics. And see how, especially on the cannabis side, see how things shake out with the current process. So that is one that was a priority last year, didn't go anywhere. So again, it's going to be debated about whether we try to go after that again, to where the city of Hagerstown, for example, could have our own police accountability board. If we didn't want to, then the county is always where we would end up going anyway. The stuff about prohibiting HOAs from revoking or altering residential parking privileges as a punitive measure if you don't pay your HOA fee. I thought, I didn't think that was a big issue, but apparently it's a huge issue downstate. That one, that one probably is going to get some enabling legislation downstate.
What's that again? I'm sorry.
HOA, people don't pay their HOA fees.
Yeah. And then another one, plastic ban, bag, banning plastic bags. That's big down in, down in the, down, downstate.
Well, let them, let them do that downstate.
Yeah, I just, I didn't think there would be much support for that. They want to use paper, or you bring your own box and do whatever.
So you want to use paper to throw more trees to be able to, right?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was a tough one. And then just, you know, there were some others. I, I can send you all the lists instead, instead of talking about them anymore. We still have some watch lists, because I know Bob's super interested in this. There are some ones we still need to watch. We still need to watch the family medical leave requirements that are being put on the municipalities. We're really hoping we can get an opt-out from municipal governments, both city and county, to where we don't have to do it, because we already do, some already do it, like us. So we're looking at that. We're looking at water account management restrictions. That's still a thing, like we talked about last year, prohibiting the ability to shut off accounts that have gone unpaid over a period of time, which would cripple. of time, which would cripple municipal water supplies. Still a lot of climate change initiatives that are unfunded mandates that are coming through related to expulsion of greenhouse gases, those kind of things out of our wastewater department, out of wastewater departments and other public works, operations. Those are going to be closely reviewed, something we really have to watch. And then, of course, cannabis revenue. We, we get a pittance, and it's just a pittance of the revenue, even though we get some, which is better than nothing, it's still a pittance. And like I said, we've been warned, don't, don't bring it. So we have to decide whether we're going to bring it or whether we're going to wait a year. I would suspect that we end up waiting a year, but again, that's something y'all can, can think about if you want to bring it up. What I would ask, and I'll send, I'll just send this list out to you all, is to think about it over the next couple of weeks. And then I'll come back in the beginning of October, and we'll get a list going, and those are things I can take to the community coalition if you go that route. Certainly, I'll take them to Rob Gradjola. I'll take him to MML with me in October, and we'll see how much of this we can get, we can get going. And of course, you never know what to expect when it comes to a legislative session. Money sometimes shows up suddenly, and then sometimes money, like last year, money goes away pretty quickly. But we're going to be full steam on the field, on the fieldhouse, absolutely, and full steam on the, on the tax. And we'll also have, in October, some good updates on the textile parcel situation, working with the county. Paul will be in here, I think it's the 10th of October, to present you some parcels that we're ready to move on and get those, get those out of the textile, the chronic inventory and get them productive again. So I'll be back in October, and we'll get a list together and we'll go from there.
You don't want our list tonight?
Huh?
You don't want our list tonight?
I don't want it tonight. I just wanted you to chance to think about it. It's still a little early. I get them in October, early October, then we should be, should be good to go.
You got it ready for tonight?
If you got it ready.
Oh, I got mine. You know I do. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's going to be a surprise, I'm sure.
All right. Can I have a motion to go into?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance, increasing the number of members of the Hagerstown Youth Council and establishing a partner group.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance increasing the number of members of the Hagerstown Youth Council from no more than 11 to no more than 19, and establishing a partner group to mentor the Hagerstown Youth Council.
Second. Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance, conveyance of city property and granting a temporary construction easement to the Board of County Commissioners for Crystal Falls Drive.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to introduce an ordinance approving the conveyance of a portion of city property on Crystal Falls Drive consisting of 785 plus minus square feet to the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with the property acquisition agreement. The agreement also includes granting a temporary construction easement. The conveyance of this property is part of Washington County's Bridge Replacement Project on Crystal Falls Drive over Beaver Creek.
Seven.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. City Administrator?
I hope I don't step on your toes on too many of these, but we got a bunch of stuff going on this weekend. Farmer's Market is Thursday, 3:00 to 6:00, at West Church Street, live music by Tim Seals, and food artisans, fresh produce, the works. Should be a good day to come over and visit the vendors at the Farmer's Market. The Heel Color Splash 5K is Saturday, the 23rd, 9:00 a.m. to noon, Fairgrounds Park. Autumn Artist Market is also Saturday, 9:23, at 9:00 o'clock to 2:00 in the Central Lot. Foundry Pop-Up Shops is putting that on. One of my favorite events, Porch Fest on South Prospect Street, Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Deb Kepler and Historic Heights Group does a great job with this event, and it's really unique, I think, for our area. 30 musicians, kids' activities, a beer garden, food trucks. They're also collecting musical instruments. If you, if you have instruments that you want to get rid of, they're going to have collection, people there collecting those to get out to folks that might not be able to get their hands on various musical instruments. So again, Neighborhoods First, Historic Heights puts this on, and it's just a super fun event. And Washington Goes Purple Recovery Walk is also Saturday, noon to 3:00 in University Plaza. And I want to thank Brittany Arizmendi for everything she's done this past summer with all of the events, and she's got more lined up. She's as bad as Councilwoman McIntyre with coming with ideas all the time, but she's got ideas coming. The Fall Folk Fest, the Fall Folk Fest is going to be pretty cool, too, and it's, she's just doing a great job trying to keep interest moving in downtown. So I want to thank her for that. That's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schindler?
Just hope everybody comes out. There's no shortage of things to do here in Hagerstown. Please don't say nothing to do here. Lots, lots going on. It's exciting.
Councilwoman Burnett?
No, save mine. For another time.
For another time.
Yeah.
You know, Scott, I agree. Brittany has just done a tremendous job. Just watching her downtown Hagerstown posts and how she promotes every business that's having a special or an event, or it is, it's, what a, an exciting time, you know, and you feel it every time you're, you're watching any kind of social media that she does. And she did such a great job last, I guess it was last Friday night with the Hispanic festival that was downtown, and it winded down. And, and thank you for putting, I asked, because it was, there was somewhat limited attendees, and I asked if it was translated into Spanish, and it was. So thank you to whomever is contributing to that, to help our non-English-speaking residents to know about the things that are going on. So hats off to Brittany. I think she's doing a great job, too. That is it.
So I just want to say congratulations to our new officers that were sworn in today, Officers Boyle and Ortiz. Congratulations and welcome to Hagerstown Police Department. I just also want to say to everyone in Hagerstown, there's a lot of work, road work going on. And I get frustrated, too, but I do know that it's going on, which means I then either take an alternate route or make sure I leave the house a little bit earlier. And so just be mindful, in order for things to get fixed and things to be built, then that means there's going to be road closures and that kind of thing. Kind of be patient with each other. Take some more time. Take, you know, leave out 20 minutes earlier versus the seven, and then you're not cussing out people because of the road work. I'm not saying I got cussed out, but kind of did. And then also, every Wednesday, I do a segment on News Talk 103.7 FM at 8:40 in the morning called Mayor on the Air. It's a really fun time for about 10 minutes, and so just want to throw that out there, that if you want to listen to even more funny, I think I'm funny, then you should tune in. Bob doesn't think I'm funny.
I mean, right.
Bob doesn't think I'm, but I think I'm funny. And if you want more of my funny, then please tune in to 103.7 tomorrow morning and every Wednesday morning for Mayor on the Air. And yeah, that's it. With that, we are adjourned.
I think you're funny.
You think I'm funny?
Yeah.
Why didn't you smile then?
What did you want to talk about tonight?
That is his smile.
Same thing here.
All right, where's the Joel and Bonda?
Oh, I mean, you know.
It's in my, it's in my mind.
Oh, that's what I meant to say. And for the third time, Councilwoman Burnett is going to do invocation.
That's what I forgot to say in my.
I don't know how she feels about it, chief, but.
You know, Shelley, you've been asked, what are the priorities for?
They're all in that drawer right there. I put some extra ones in there, too.
Well, that's what I said.
I know, you can bring it up. I know it's on.
Well, you can bring it up. I know it's on.
Hello and welcome to Council Rap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by City Administrator Scott Nice Warner. You had a long time to talk during the meeting, but we're going to talk some more about those legislative priorities because they are extremely important. And the new year is right around the corner. I mean, I think this really focuses us on that in particular. And as you said, I mean, really, they fall into two categories. One, where it comes down to funding and money available from the state. And on the other side, you've got those legislative priorities. And certainly, it's no surprise that the Field House is right at the top of that list.
And we've also come to learn over the last several years that you don't go to the legislators with your initiatives in December for a January opening day.
Yeah.
We've learned that this is pretty much a year-round deal. And there are already committees meeting, task forces are meeting on various initiatives throughout the state. So one thing that certainly our lobbyists, Compass advocates, has instilled in us is that we need to get in legislators' ears early, and by early September, October. Probably earlier than that, but there's only, you know, so much we can do. But that's what we're going to try to do, introduce that here. And then come back in October, get the list from Mayor and Council as to what they see as priorities. Tell them what staff also sees as priorities, and then we can go from there.
Do you believe that it helps, I mentioned the Field House, that's something that was already out there last year, is on many radars already. Does that help in terms of, you know, getting more money for the Field House potentially?
I think it all depends. You'll have legislators that'll say, oh, you're bringing this back again. And but then you'll also have legislators that'll realize the kind of project it is and what a catalyst it would be. Not only for the city and the county, but also for that particular part of town in the East End.
Sure.
And won't have any problem jumping on board with some additional money. And again, it doesn't mean that we're not continuing the project if we don't get that money. But it would certainly help, it would certainly help the project to be able to get it.
How do you go about, when you look at some of these things that are certainly, you know, legislatively heavy? And really, they all are in the long run, but at the same time, how do you gather support for some of these things? You talked about the Maryland Municipal League. Certainly, they have some impetus in that. But some of these ones that you brought up earlier during the meeting, how do you, you know, get that type of support that is necessary in order to get them through the legislature?
Well, you have to, you have to establish relationships first and foremost, I think. Not only with your legislators, but also we have to with fellow municipalities. And that includes counties. Because the municipalities are only as strong as their counties, and the counties are only as strong as their towns and cities. So relationship building definitely helps. Relationship building in Annapolis. We have MML, counties have Mako, that have legislative teams that have excellent relationships with legislators and can advocate more on a collective basis with, whether it be the MML for all towns and cities or Mako for all counties. If we want to look at legislation that is specific to our city or to our county, that's where we have to work with the delegation. And then the delegation has to have their relationships going to where they can move, they can move things through, hopefully, through the legislature. Again, we are Western Maryland. We are not, we do not, we are different than the middle of the state. We are also different than the eastern shore. So our priorities may not match their priorities. But again, relationship building, communication, you have to at least be able to, to be able to advance what your priorities are to even get them on the table. And then, once you get them there, then you've just got to be able to drive them forward as well as you can.
There are a lot of layers to reaching that end goal. What have you learned in your trips to Annapolis? And how has that helped you in the way that you approach this?
I, I think on two levels. The first is, a lot of times, we will go down, and I'm sure other places feel this way too. We'll go down thinking we're the only ones who have this problem. Tax sale, the tax sale property is a perfect example. We've worked for years trying to get to the point where we're going to be next month to where we can present a package of parcels that are chronic tax sales. Thanks to legislation that we found Cumberland was also, and Frostburg were also trying to advance. Once we found that out, we could partner on that legislation and join forces on that. We were able to make progress in the legislature, and we were able to get that bill through. We're going to do that again for the unpaid abatements that go to tax, that can be sent to tax sale bill as well. Trying to find those commonalities. Tax differential is one, that, you know, we've had our thoughts on tax differential for a decade or more. We come to find out that there are 93 other municipalities that are having the same issue that we are. So those kind of things. Whether it be through legislation, or whether it just be through communication with counterparts or other decision makers related to these issues, being able to address those as a collective is much more powerful than thinking you've got to go after everything as me, or the mayor, or council members. It just makes it a lot more, I don't want to say legitimate, but maybe a lot more impactful to legislators to know that it's not just one person, you've got a group.
It's interesting when you talk about tax differential, because you also alluded earlier to a synergy or a potential partnership between a city and a county. And this is one where those two sides are certainly divided. So do you feel in a way that when that goes before the legislators, perhaps they're a little more reluctant to rule on something like that? Because you don't have that type of synergy, and they're like, we don't want to land on one side or the other?
That was the entire thought about why we would not progress that through during this session as a single body of towns and cities. Because you know the legislators don't want to get in the middle of a, I don't want to say a catfight, but a euphemism, a catfight. We're fortunate that we do have communication with the county, and we do receive information from them on how the tax differential may work. Parts of it we may not agree with, but at least we do have communication. There are some municipalities, I found out over the last several months, that get no communication. And I feel for those, because there are definitely some, especially on the eastern shore, that are getting, I think, extremely short-changed on a tax differential, and they have no way to advocate for it. But I think the way that MML and Mako are going to go about this, and which is, it's just communication. It's a back and forth, you know, let's see how we can fix this. You help us fix this, we help you fix that, those kind of things. I mean, that's how the world works. And I think that we kind of do that every day in government. And I still think it's probably the best approach when it comes to this, when it comes to annexation, when it comes to revenue enhancements, I think that's just the best way to do it.
You said to me, when we talked about this a little bit last week, you said that some of these might be unpopular. Who would they necessarily be unpopular with?
Pick. Just, there are some things that are going to be unpopular. A lot of things, a lot of initiatives come through the legislature. You know, we as towns and municipalities look at, it's like, there is no way we're going to be, there's no way you can make us do that, but not give us a way to pay for it. Tax differential, obviously, that's going to create issues, not only amongst municipalities, but amongst ourselves, but also with the counties. Revenue enhancements are going to make, are going to, you know, be contentious with the state. Even, you know, I was watching, for whatever reason, last night, I turned it on, the C-SPAN last night, and you hear about the contention in the House of Representatives. And yet, you see votes coming up, and they're unanimous for, unanimous against. So you figure at some point, both sides are working with each other. Whether it be to name a VA center for some guy or a woman, or whether it's to name a road, or whether it's to do whatever, that's what happens here as well. And to be able to do that and show that, again, there are those relationships, you have to be able to get through the tough things as well. And a lot of these, unfortunately, are pretty tough topics.
Right. Yes, I mean, sometimes the issue is that something's unpopular just because it's never been done that way before. And people really get set in their ways that this is the only way, because this is the only way it's ever been done, but we need to explore some of these different avenues at this point in time.
Well, and you know, in Maryland, in Maryland, the only true way for towns and cities to create revenue is through property taxes. That's why, you know, every budget year, the big wrestle is, you know, what do we do with taxes? Do we raise the tax rate? Generate, usually it's around $275,000, $280,000 per cent, per one cent of a tax increase. To, you know, to, you can look at it and say, that one cent tax increase on an average tax bill might be an additional 60 bucks a year. Well, 60 bucks a year is pretty significant to some folks. So to be able to do like West Virginia does, where West Virginia provides sales tax, portions of sales tax to municipalities. Personal property taxes are another, you know, thing. Bond, being able to levy bonds are another way, public bonds. Those things we don't have here. So that's why it is important to make sure that, that when it comes to the taxpayers, and one thing that, if it ever happens here again, when it comes to those type of revenue enhancements, there has to be a clear understanding or a clear presentation of what that means.
Yeah.
And whether that is, you know, a sales tax, a streaming tax, that's been another concept that's been out there for a couple of years, charging a tax on your YouTube, TV, or your DirecTV, you know, whatever, your Paramount Plus. That would be another revenue stream that, even though it would impact the consumer, wouldn't directly impact the taxpayer, and it would be done on a fairly equitable basis. So, you know, those are tough. Whenever you mess with people's pocketbooks and their pay, it's a tough, it's a tough discussion.
Especially when it's the government getting in the pocket.
Especially when it's the government that is a recipient of it.
Yeah.
But it's just something, it's something that needs to be, that needs to be addressed. You cannot, you cannot expect to operate in today's environment with limited resources. Because then, you know, the potholes that don't get filled every year, there's double the next year. And there's got to be other ways to do that than just saying, we're going to pop a two-cent tax rate increase.
So will this be, meaning the priorities for the upcoming legislative session, the General Assembly, will that be an agenda item in an upcoming meeting where it'll be discussed with Mayor and Council at that point in time for their recommendations? And then you'll sort of formulate, put all of that together and come up with, you know, that final product?
Yeah, I plan to come back, probably, I think it's the 10th of October.
The 10th.
To get feedback from the Mayor and Council. I will send them out just this general list of ideas. And again, these, the ones I mentioned during the meeting are not out of the top of my head. They're ones that through discussions with other municipalities, that other municipalities have either done or have looked at. I don't know that there's any one here where everybody's going to, you know, jump up and down and scream for joy over them. These affect one person or another, or one group of people or another. But still, they're important topics that do need addressed. And when, on the 10th of October, hopefully, Mayor and Council will also have some priorities they can discuss. And then what the ultimate thing would be, to have a list that I can take to the delegation of Washington County. I can take to our lobbyists, I can take to the coalition, I can take to MML, and say, here are the priorities and focus that the City of Hagerstown is going to look to advance and try to start drumming up support for it.
Yeah, so this is just the beginning for this, just the preliminary discussion, the presentation by you earlier this afternoon, and then much more to come here as we head toward the new year. But as you said earlier, the sooner, the better that these can be decided on and can be handed off. And we'll watch this process unfold here over the next several months.
Yep.
So appreciate your time, as always. Good talking to you.
Always an honor and privilege to be sitting here with you.
Oh, jeez. Thanks to Scott, thanks to all of you for watching. Hopefully, you're a little more sincere about it. He's sincere, but at the same time, at the same time, there's always a little bit of this push and pull. I do appreciate it.
See you on radio, Cyrus.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Scott, and thanks to all of you for watching. For now, that's a wrap. I'll see you next time on Council Rap.